Go ahead and get started tonight with a word of prayer led by Mr. Bolden.
Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Father, we thank you for yet another day. We thank you for the gift of life. We are so grateful you have given us the opportunity to serve as citizens of this wonderful city in Nacogdoches. Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our action so that we may have a successful meeting this evening. May we always be guided by the spirit of community. May we conduct, create an environment of cooperation and respect. We ask for blessing on our elected officials, local and nationwide. May those servants who are in position of authority take their responsibility seriously and do their very best each day. May they realize their need for you and your direction. May they hear your voice as they make their decision and may they follow your guidance. May they have a passion for people, for truth and for nation, for righteousness. It is in your most blessed name I pray, amen.
Amen. So I'd like to call this meeting to order for October 2nd, 2018. It's good to see all of you here. Thank you for coming. We do not have anyone that has signed up for the open forum, so we'll move along to agenda item number three, which is to consider, to remove anything from the consent agenda, and if not, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number five of our regular agenda is considering purchase, the purchase of six police vehicles. And we have Chief Jim Seavey with us.
Mayor and council, good evening. I am come before you firstly tonight to discuss purchase of six police vehicles. These will replace our regular fleet vehicles that are, either have high mileage on them or high maintenance costs on them. You see them listed on your agenda item sheet, anywhere from 120,000 miles on up on these vehicles. These are police package Tahos. The cost for the vehicles is listed, and there is additional equipment that would be purchased with the remaining funds. The funds come from the equipment replacement account, so the money is there. This is an anticipated planned purchase, and as you can see, we are expecting to spend about $235,214 on these vehicles. That includes the graphics and the setup. We have a company in the Metroplex that actually builds these vehicles for us. We buy the police package vehicles, of course, on a state contract, deliver them to the outfitter who then completes the cars with our cameras, our radios, graphics and all those kind of things, cages, all the equipment that goes into a car. That leaves $164,786 of that account left unspent, and that money is then spent on additional equipment, things like camera systems, which we'll get to that next, and things like that. This is, this is, these vehicles are anywhere from nine years old, or we have one that's a 2012 mile, so it's about six years old. The ones that, the 2012 is what we refer to as a fleet vehicle, it is constantly being rotated. It's, as officers need a vehicle, it pretty much operates 24/7. So that's why you got a 2012 in there that has 128,000 miles. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
See if anyone wants to comment first, and then we will do that. Is there anyone here that would like to have a comment or a question about the purchase of these vehicles? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, questions or comments for Chief Seavey?
Well, just a comment. I mean, Chief, you mentioned the mileage on vehicles, which some people would consider not very much mileage, but there's a lot of idle time on those vehicles also, isn't there?
There is. When our vehicles are stopped at the location of a call, they get locked and they're left running because if you shut that thing down, it's going to turn off the computers, cameras, everything, all of our recording equipment. These cars have two batteries in them, but it's still not enough to sustain all the electronics. So we, they, they stay on all the time. And I'd also like to point out that a police car in a city is, it gets driven pretty hard sometimes. So it's, it's not like your typical family car, so.
Yeah, they're just like, in case a citizen asks about the mileage to me, I realize that there's much more than that.
Well, they will eventually go on auction on Gov. deals, I believe, and if they would like to purchase a low mileage police package Tahoe, then we'll be happy to sell it to them. That money goes back into our budget, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Good, good to bring up. Any, anything else? And if not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the purchase of six police vehicles.
Second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we purchase six police vehicles. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And number six, consider the purchase of mobile video cameras and body cameras for patrol officers and investigators.
I don't have my little clicker thing. We're good. I want to give you a little bit of history about this. This is a project that has been a long time coming. We've wanted body cameras and an upgraded vehicle camera system, we call them MVRs, mobile vehicle recorders, for a long time. Our current vendors, Custom Signals, they are primarily, what everyone knows them, buys for, they manufacture speed radars. And that's where they began their business, and that's where their bread and butter is. Then they started to develop in-car cameras, mobile vehicle recorders, and we've had this system for, golly, close to 15 years. And so it was one of the early, early systems out there. About two years ago, probably two years plus, we wanted body cameras. So we contacted Custom, and they said, said, how about you guys, you gonna, are you gonna do body cameras? And they said, we sure are, we're right on the brink of it. And then a year passed. Next year, are you gonna do body cameras? And then a year passed. And it's to the point now where our MVRs are obsolete, they are breaking down on a daily basis. It is a major problem for us. And they still don't have body cameras. So we started the search for a better, I think, a better product, better body cameras. And we, we identified several vendors, Provision, Digital Ally, Custom Signals, they still make MVRs, they still don't have a good body camera. And WatchGuard, those are the companies, we actually demoed their equipment onsite here in Nacogdoches and looked at the quality of the equipment, plus the availability of it. What they're primarily used for, the biggest thing, is on racial profiling reporting. We, we have the ability to be partially exempted from the racial profiling reporting if we have cameras and that have both video and audio. And if you don't have that, then you have to do a full manual report, which means that our officers would spend hours and hours a week doing nothing but paperwork, reporting what they did already. With, with videos and with our audio capabilities, that exempts us from some of that because it's recorded. And our policy, and it is followed, is that supervisors go in and review the officer's video. They review a certain number of videos each week. So they're actually watching what the officers have done on the street. But we still don't have good, what we consider to be a good system from Customs, so we started looking around. This is also an officer safety issue. One of the very, very, very first videos ever to be widely distributed was Constable Lunsford's video that showed him being murdered on a traffic stop. That video has been shown all over the country, probably all over the world numerous times. So I hate to talk about this, but the evidentiary value of video allows cases like that to be successfully investigated and concluded. A lot of people know they're on camera, and that stops a lot of bad behavior in the beginning because they know they're being recorded. So that's another part of officer safety and investigative uses. It creates a public record of all police contacts. And I'll explain that a little bit more when we get to the body camera part of it. It develops visual and audio evidence. If anybody has not seen CSI wherever, wherever it happens to be, those are expectations. They are not realistic. Now, a video, a good quality video with quality audio is a realistic request from the public, and we want to support that. The glowing fingerprints and things like that, sometimes that, a little over the top, but I think we can, we can explain that at trial, that no, we don't have glowing fingerprint machines or shoebox sized DNA sequence, or we can get DNA matches back from in 15 minutes. But this is something that's reasonable, it's a public expectation. And another thing that we're going to begin with this purchase is an expanded digital record of interrogations and interviews on scene. Because one of the things we'll be doing here is getting body cameras for investigators who can put those body cameras on. And when we go to the scene, rather than having to say, can you please come back to my office, we can take a statement, or whatever, we can do it right there at the scene. It's going to be much quicker, more accurate, and a much better product that we'll be able to provide for the courts and ultimately the community. So I've already gone through most of this. Our system is old, it frequently fails in the field. When it fails, we have to pull that car off, and if we can't change the unit out, the car goes down and it just sits there while we get a camera repaired. So it drags down our entire equipment, stable of equipment. Something that's really irritating is right now, we can have two officers on scene, and we can see them and we can hear them. A third officer comes up, and by, because of interference, it bumps one of the microphones offline. So we can, we can hear two people talking, but sometimes we have three or four more people depending on what the call is, and you will not get audio from all of them. So that's a problem that we have right now. Our video quality right now is very poor. You can get better video off your phone than we get off of our MVRs. They're old and the cameras are, they have not been updated. We have no body cameras except for our K-9 units right now. We have them on our K-9 units because they're out working alone, out on highways, and sometimes out in the county depending on what we're doing on occasion, but no one in town has body cameras. When they get away from the car, there, there's just nothing, except for what you see out the front windshield of the car. Our entire system is, is degrading, and our entire system is in need of replacing. So what will we get for all this money? Mobile cameras for every patrol car, mobile video recorders, body cameras for every patrol officer, body cameras for investigators in CID, our criminal investigation division. This will also include sufficient storage capacity for current and foreseeable future needs. My goal is to make this the best system in the world until I retire. Then after that, it's up to y'all. But in reality, it will last long after I'm gone. This is an upgradable system. Now, because this is what they do, this is their business, and they're a long-term company. WatchGuard's a long-term company, they've been around a long time. I've been to their presentations every year for six or seven years and just walked away, shaking my head saying, I wish. And, but they've been around a long time, they have a proven track record, and they will come out with upgrades that will be far less expensive than having to replace a system. They also have redaction software, which is significant because we're going to do open records requests. And there are some things you cannot release on a video. Well, this redaction software will go in and we can tell it to, to like blackout faces or, or we can take out some of the, of the speech, whatever we need to do. And that keeps us from violating someone's civil rights or revealing someone whose identity needs to be protected, sexual assault victims, children, things like that. And right now, we go through and do this manually, and it's minute by minute. Oh, stop here, do this, start there, do that. It's really a big, big, big time waster, really. And these components are ruggedized, they're intended to be used in the field, they're intended to be used in cars, and they, the recordings, the video and the audio is, is just exceptional. My one concern, and I'm going to say it today, and you may, I'll be called on to testify in court one day that I said this, the cameras are capable of seeing better than humans are. So they gather light, they process the picture at a better quality. So if there's a night shot of the camera and the camera sees something that the officer can't see. Now, this company will also come in and explain all these things. But one of the advantages to this, like put the camera on night shot, which is a night vision, and the officer can actually look on their, their display in the car and see what they could not see before. But when they get out of the car, they lose that, and that's really what I want you guys to remember, is that they're going to lose that ability when they get out of the car because it's built into the camera, and you can't walk around with a display in front of you. And so that, my one and only concern is that we be able to explain to juries especially that, yes, you may have been able to see that on the video, but the officer was over there and could not see that. So that's a struggle, it's going to be a challenge for us. It's been overcome in other cities, in other jurisdictions, and I think we're going to be okay with it, but I wanted you to know about that because if I ever, it's not an excuse, it's a reality. The vendor is WatchGuard, total cost is $377,310. It's about a six to eight week bill that time. We hope to equip the cars with this new system by the end of this year and have it fully functioning, fully operational, have policies and procedures in place, and have everyone trained on it. So we're hoping to be finished up by December of 2018. And with that, if you have questions, I'll try to answer.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would, that has a comment? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, questions?
So I assume it's flexible, but on the DVR, how long of a lag time does it keep? Is it a 30-day or 60-day or one year?
It actually, unless we preserve a video, it automatically deletes it at 90 days.
Okay. And then, just curious, assuming they're not trying to block off somebody getting away, are they, are officers trained to park in such a way that the cameras can be utilized?
Yes. And the good thing about this is that that's going to become less of an issue because you have body camera now. So when you get out, that body camera is going to follow you. But yes, they're, they're trained to, and the, and the cameras can be repositioned just by touching them and twisting them around. So they do that like on a DWI stop, they'll get the person off on the side of the road in a safe place and turn the camera around. That's going to be less of an issue because their body cameras will now show all of that.
Awesome.
That's going to be a really, really nice thing to have.
I love the, the night vision piece. I've been on many, your officers do a great job, I've been on many, fortunately, false alarms, but it'd be awfully nice, there's the pit in the stomach when you, when they're looking into the building trying to determine if anybody's moving around in there.
Well, you should, you should try it for yourself sometime.
I pretend.
That pit exists in reality, too.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Yeah, on occasion, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Then the chair will end this panel motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass, agenda item number six.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, if no further discussion, all those please, for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank y'all very much.
Well, thank you, Chief.
This is a good day for us.
Congratulations. And agenda item number seven, consider contract approval for professional engineering services with KSA Engineers, Inc. for design of several sidewalk projects. Finally, we've been waiting so long to approve this contract.
Long road to get just to here. So Mayor and Council, Steve Bartlett, City Engineer. Do have for you tonight, for approval and review, is a contract for KSA Engineers. Run you through just a little bit of the process. Again, these are the revolving loan fund that was disabled monies, which were primarily being used for some sidewalk projects that you went through some iterations with me to pick, and also some that are going to parks, some park improvements, a little over 300,000 for that. So in this case, we're at the point where we need to hire an engineer, get the plans done, and get this thing built. So we are on a timetable, and so we're anxious to get that started. Again, those were sidewalks on West Star Avenue, on Park Street, and then also on a section of MLK Boulevard by the, by the Splash Park, just to refresh your memory. I do want to clarify, this morning's paper showed the fee for this contract to be $842,000, and that was just a typo. Basically, that's the entitled, excuse me, the entire project cost, construction and fees together. So the engineering fee is what you have outlined in your documents there. So I just wanted to clarify that for you. The process for this actually follows the Texas Department of Agriculture's process for acquisition because since part of these funds are theirs and part are ours, we have to work in their environments, our contracts, our contracts for construction and engineers, both are written and dictated by them, as well as the process of acquiring and procuring engineers. It's a little bit more elaborate than we may do normally, but we have to advertise in the newspaper, which we did. We solicited 10 firms, we notified 10 firms in our area, including two that were a hub or historically underutilized businesses as well, and that's a requirement. So we go through a lot of formalities to try to get this. What we received back were eight proposals, which were just basic qualification statements. Now, just to remind you, engineering is one of those things that we cannot bid, so we do not ask for price proposals. We just ask for qualifications, we pick the most qualified, and then we move into a negotiation. So we formed a committee of five members here, five staff members, to review those proposals. They were individually scored on several things, and the scoring was something we publish in the request, so they know what they're being scored on. And to make a long, long story short, because it's not that interesting to you probably, is KSA was our high-scoring engineer in this case out of all eight firms. Shawn Bergen-Polk was our second high-scoring firm. Both of those firms had done a number of sidewalk projects and worked under the Texas Department of Agriculture kind of umbrella, which has a lot of paperwork and complexities to it. And so that's one reason they both scored pretty high. KSA had a slightly higher score, so staff has recommended them for award of this contract. Now, the contract is broken down into several pieces. There's an engineering design component, just like you would think of, we have a preliminary engineering design, a design, final design level, some bidding phase and a construction phase. That's their base engineering package fee. We also request fees from them for several ad services, like, in this case, surveying. So they're going to have to survey all these just to draw background plans. They're going to have to provide control surveys for the contractor to stake out where all this is going to go, benchmarks and alignments. So that's also a fee. We have a Texas accessibility standards, if any of you've built any buildings anywhere, you know we all apply to TAS and permit. So they have a component to help us do that and go through those walkthroughs and reviews with the state. And then lastly, what they love to call RPR, and you'll hear us use that term, it's Resident Project Representative, which is a really long way to say inspection services. And so they can provide an inspector for us onsite. We really don't have staff inspection, so it's Case, or it's me, or Jason, or one of us kind of bopping in and out. We've got a lot of projects in the lot going, so typically we'll hire some help from our engineer. Could be part-time, could be full-time, just depends on our workload. In this case, the Texas Department of Agriculture requires that we have onsite inspection, so it's not really an option for us. We'll negotiate with them, how many hours a week is feasible, but it's going to easily be 20 hours or more of required inspection. So we've asked them to provide us a fee that would be on an hourly basis, so we have basically a list of all their different personnel and their rate schedule, and we can say, send us an engineer, send us an inspector, and utilize them on-call. So we have a budget for that of 21,500, so that's an on-call. So just to kind of explain that fees. Now, what we will ask you for approval for is the whole bundle, I mean, so that we have the ability to use some or all of those inspection fees or none. We do plan on doing as much of this at-house as we can to save funds. Of course, to start the process, we'll do construction estimates, but I'm going to give you the very, very rough early estimate, it's about $650,000 of construction cost. The remainder will be these fees for surveying and engineering and things that'll go in there. We'll fine-tune all that. I do want to say, as we started off, a good friend and one great citizen, Milton Moore, came in and visited, and Milton's back here, there is a wave. And Milton just expressed something to me, and I just told him I would express it to you when I got up here, is he would like very much to see that we had, try to achieve a six-foot sidewalk width and try to have some buffer when we can away from the curb. Milton's had some personal experiences with bikes and sidewalks and accidents, and so he's very dear to his heart. So what I promised him is, is our perfect design criteria would be six-foot walks, and they would be somewhat off the curb. The reality is, there'll be some areas where we may have to be more narrow, and we, areas where we may have to be at the back of curb, just depends on utility constraints and widths and all the things involved. So I just want you to know, I told him I would pass that along, and then I assured him that was our primary goal to try to do it, if we could afford it and fit it and make it all work, and where we can do it, so. Mayor, I'd be happy after public comment to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Yes, Mr. Moore, come on up.
Just add one little thing.
Of course.
If you don't mind.
It's good to see you.
Nice to thank you. My name's Milton Moore, and anyhow, this is, this is one thing I was telling, see, in other words, you have a curb here, and you have a tire here, and a rearview mirror on the side of a vehicle like my truck, it projects out nine inches like that, you see? And this curb is six inches, you know, so it projects over into the walking surface at least three inches, in some vehicles probably even more than that, you know? And it's taking away, in other words, if this were a five-foot walk and you had it adjacent to the back of the curb, you already lost three inches, that's four feet, nine inches, you know, or, or if it's a six-foot walk, it'd be five foot nine. So safety is a, is a huge thing. And I know two people that have been hit by automobiles, probably mirrors. I had an accident on my bicycle moving over for someone to give them a little more walking room, and I had an accident, I broke my hip. And, and, and going from like five feet to six feet is only a couple of dollars per square foot in, in concrete cost. I mean, I know there are other costs involved, but that's, that's just, it was just something that I felt was important, especially from a safety issue, that I ought to, to say something, you know? And that's, that's, that's about it. Steve and I are on the same page in having a goal of six feet, or at least having a goal of six feet to the backside of a curb, even if you, even if it turned out to be narrower, getting the people further away from the street, having this, this edge of the concrete being six feet back of a curb would be an important thing to consider. So anyhow, I just wanted to toss that out, and thank y'all for your time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else? Counsel, questions or comments for Mr. Bartlett? Okay, hearing none.
Why is the engineering cost so high? I mean, I just calculated, that is 28% of construction cost?
With the additional services added on to it? Yeah. And I'm not sure I can directly give you an answer to that, as you price services and I've priced services out, it's a lot of variables involved in this.
I mean, a typical engineer, architect fee for building a building, air conditioning, all the utilities associated with that is somewhere around 10%.
What, what, what we're seeing, especially under these TDA-type, CDBG-type projects with the state, are engineering fee, base engineering fees in the 15% to 16% range. So I will say that's been pretty much across the board kind of thing that we're seeing in the industry. So to answer your first question, I think the base engineering preliminary through construction phase is typically all falling there, regardless of what consultants we're looking at. The ad service-
28% now?
Well, the-
For the total fee that we're approving, the 183,850?
Correct. Well, the topographic surveys and the construction staking and all that, when you add it, it's adding, yeah, additional percentage, and realize those are defined in the Department Agriculture's contract as additional services. So we could hire another outside surveyor or somebody else to do that, a different consultant. We've obviously chose to bundle them. When you add those up, then yeah, they, they are taking some number of 28%. That's correct. I, I want you to know that part of what we do, what you hired me to do with over three decades of coming up with these fees for councils, was to try to vet this when they come in with some intelligence, and I do that. I do want you to know the numbers you're seeing have been negotiated. They were not these numbers when we started. So we have worked on them, albeit high in your vision, and I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying, we've worked them down. So where we are here is, I guess, the point where, you know, we were comfortable, we had hit a threshold. I do see one change, and Councilman and I talked about this at another time, but what we've seen is engineering fees change in the way they bill. Construction phase services used to be part of this base fee, and what they're doing now is adding, you know, that. So it's raised things from the 10% range to a 15% range. Remember, we, we don't get to go out and price check this with everybody, so we don't get to bid these. So you're trying to use my experience and my intelligence of what I've seen in the industry and come up with a price. Is it perfect? Would they all have the same number? The answer is no, they wouldn't. But we're just trying to do our best. And so I don't, I don't have much of an answer for you other than it is what it is.
When they submit their supplemental to you, does that include a number?
No, no, sir.
It doesn't?
Oh, no, sir.
So you just choose the, choose the-
The way, the way the law reads, the Procuring Act reads, that we have to choose them, select them, notify them, then we begin a negotiation phase. Yes, sir. And in this-
So it's not a competitive bid?
It is not a competitive bid.
That's good for the engineers. That's good for the engineers.
It's our state, our state did that for both engineers and surveyors and architects.
If you did this in-house, how much you think it would cost you to do it? I mean, if you had the staff to do it. I mean, you know, we're going to pass it, I know that, but that's just, when I see that kind of money and I know the kind of work I used to do for much less than that, it's amazing.
Well, let me-
It's a sidewalk.
Understand. And let me kind of ask how you want me to answer that. When we look at cost at the city for staffing or for projects like this, the city does not track components like overhead. Where in a business, and I'll tell you just vividly, my, it took me, small firm, fifteen percent design profit margin, it took me two-point-nine times my labor cost. So if somebody made twenty dollars an hour, I had to have almost sixty dollars an hour to make a fifteen percent margin. We can go through the math another day in another venue, but the point is, that's what all my fringe benefits and overhead cost. In the city, I know what our staff labor costs are and we know what their fringe benefits are, but we rarely apply the lights that we sit under right now and the air conditioning is an overhead. So what does it cost? If we ignore all that, then the cost would easily be half. I mean, just as a simple metric to you, cost would easily be half. If we apply an overhead factor to it, I don't know, because it's never been quantified here. So-
Because none of this is, there's no materials of significance in any of this. This is all intellectual labor.
Mm-hmm. That's primarily the definition of engineering.
Yeah, and so, I mean, if you took half of that, you were at ninety thousand, that is an easy job for, you know, ninety thousand, or say ninety thousand divided by, I guess, you'd pay, I don't know, one point four. I mean, I don't know how you'd be, probably a sixty thousand dollar a year employee. It just, I keep getting to this like I did with the water model, that some of this stuff we should try to figure out how to do in-house because this is what I've heard. We don't have, people have told me, we don't have money to do this project that somebody would like to see, you know, something done in a park, but there's always money to pay a consultant to do something. Now, I've heard that over and over from people and I agree with them. And, you know, a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to design three sidewalks? I mean, most people look at that and go, that doesn't make any sense.
Understand. Well, I mean, Councilman, I think we have, you have a decision. We can either be a shop in the engineering world upstairs where we project manage, so we project manage consultants and contractors, or we can be a shop that's actually a design shop like I used to have and run. And so right now, we are not a design shop. We don't have the tools or the staff to do it. So what we're talking about is, is it more cost-effective? Well, I'd assume it probably is, and some cities have added design shop components and they picked the non-specialty things out. We're still going to have to hire engineers to do our pre-treatment process and sewer plant permitting sometimes, things that might be specialty design there. So certainly we could, but what we're going to have to do is full-time staff ourselves and a little bit of equipment and computers to go with it if we want to become a production shop. And quite honestly, that's a decision that y'all make indirect because we can certainly run it either way. We certainly run it either way.
So Case and is it Jason, are they purely one-hundred percent project administrators? They don't actually do any engineering?
Case, Case is a registered professional engineer like me. Jason is a technician. So we all do some levels of engineering, but to actually answer your question, we do some things in-house. We have three projects this year that we picked to do in-house. They were easier, they were more simplified.
What were those?
We did water and sewer, two little water and sewer replacement projects where we had to do realignments around some structures. And the fee to go out and get that done would have been very high percentage because they're not going to gear up for a small project. And then what we've been doing in-house the last few years since Case has joined us is the paving projects. I did those for you guys since nineteen ninety-two privately. So this year alone, and I'm going to give you a round number, so, but if you had hired me to do all three paving projects outsourced, we'd be somewhere total close to a hundred thousand dollars in fees. And we did that internally. Case did all that, and so we have certainly paid for his existence. And I'll make him take the trash out, too. But it's been justifiable, so we're doing that in-house. So we're trying to do some of that. One other component, and I promised Mr. Jeffers this when we talked about hiring an assistant city engineer, was we also do the preliminary engineering phase or the early, at least early phase. So we don't bring a consultant in and say, come back with a conceptual design. Case and I are handing him a conceptual design, you know, a Sharpie marker version of it. And so we negotiate our fees downward a little bit because he's already hit the ground fifteen percent running or some number like that. And so, so we're trying to do some of that. If we want to upgrade beyond that, then we're talking about setting up to be a plans production shop and have staff just dedicated to that. So, I mean, we don't oppose either way.
Okay. I have a, okay.
Anything else? Okay. If not, would someone like, thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it, but with one request, is that we look at, you know, when you've got forty-four thousand dollars for a preliminary design, that's a pretty detailed preliminary design. Could we get a, you know, you to, just email us, you know, something that's much more simple, so we can see where there's a six-foot sidewalk, where there can't be a six-foot sidewalk, what the distance between back of curb and the sidewalk is, you know, just that, you know, where it is, like you said, with a Sharpie markup, you know, after you've done your topo survey, you know, just a conceptual layout with no grading or drainage or anything.
Councilman, absolutely we can. We probably go beyond that, and we can actually do, give you a little presentation here and give you a document as well. If you'll look, and they define this a little differently than I did in my business, but preliminary design in here is through sixty percent complete. So that's a, pretty much a full line work set of drawings.
Right. And the point is, if we want to change, then we've already done a bunch of work that needs to get changed.
So we get a thirty percent. So if you see, we had reviews at thirty and sixty. So thirty's the first time we're going to see everything appear in front of us. And what we'll do is share that thirty percent with you and show you what we're coming up with, obviously still subject to tweaks, but we're happy to give that to you. You bet. You bet. Thank you.
So that's my motion. There you bring it up.
So can we say, let's see, you're making a motion for the design of several sidewalk projects with conceptual design shared with counsel?
That's fine. I mean, Mr. Bartlett knows what we mean.
Well, but we need it for the record. Does that sound okay, Mr. Davis?
Well, the actual item is to either approve or not approve the contract. However, where did Mr. Bartlett go? With regard to providing those plans as they come in, and certainly Mr. Bartlett could do that at your direction without there being a motion. But the issue before us at this time is the contract itself with KSA.
Right. So when you write these, when these get written up like that, this is a yes or no? Everything on here is a yes or no deal? There's no, you know, with conditions? Is that the way this agenda's set up?
No, sir. It could be. It could be depending on the agenda item, but with regard to this particular matter, this is a contract, standalone contract for these engineering services with KSA. And given the, given the type project that we're working on here and these funds that, you know, we're going from the revolving loan fund and using these funds here, essentially it's like a community development block grant. And so they're very defined contracts and things that we must adhere to. And with regard to this contract on this particular agenda item, we don't get to use our contract that my office and other offices have put together. We actually have to use a prescribed contract. So on this one, yes, sir, we've got that contract and that's the contract we have to use.
Okay. So we can make the motion to just approve item seven?
Yes, sir. But certainly a no could be made with the understanding that Steve will do that. Yes, sir.